Good afternoon and welcome to the February 21st meeting of the City of Murfreesboro's Historic Zoning Commission. I want to, let's see, we do have a quorum present, so I will call the meeting to order. It's 3:30. We need first to approve the minutes from the last meeting, which was back in June 2022. If anybody has any corrections or additions to that, please speak now, or I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you much. Before we get into the new business, I just wanted to let it be known, today is my first meeting as Chair of the Historic Zoning Commission, so I appreciate everybody's confidence in voting me into this position. Jeff Davis is the new co-chair. I appreciate you, David Becker, you just finished up a term as your, as the Vice Chair, and Jim Thomas, who's not with us today, has served well as our Chair in the past, so I just wanted to give thanks to everybody and appreciate your confidence in putting me in this position.
We appreciate you accepting it.
Thank you, David. All right, Amelia, could you introduce our new business for us today?
I sure will, we have one new business item today, it is for Michael and Lynn Parkinson at 429 East College Street. The property is located on the north side of East College Street, several lots to the west of North Highland Avenue. The one and a half story, single-family house was constructed approximately 1890 in the vernacular cottage style with decorative gable vents, clapboard siding, and a classical wraparound porch. The house is a contributing structure in the North Maney Avenue Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. The property contains approximately .35 acres in its own RS, single-family residential home, eight, that means they have to have 8,000 square foot to qualify as an eight, and then in the historic overlay district, as well as in the CCO district. The house was converted to a duplex, then it was converted to a triplex, the applicants are now returning the home to a single-family dwelling unit. I'm going to show you real quickly the houses around the area. This is the current house as it stands today, as you can see, that's from the front, and then a picture from the west, another picture from the east. This is the house directly to the, to the west, it is a single-family home. This is the house to the east, it is a duplex. This is the house across the street, there's kind of like two across the street from it, this one actually happens to be a triplex, and then the one directly across is also a duplex. I am going to allow the Chairman to go through, there are about 14 different modifications that the homeowners are wanting to do to the exterior of the building, so I'm going to ask Mr. Jakes if he would please go through each one of those individually, and then you all discuss them one at a time, and then vote on them, on each one. And the applicant is here today to answer any questions that you may have about the modifications. I will also be going through the pictures as we discuss each one of these items, if they can pull up my computer.
All right.
There we go.
Thank you, Amelia.
This is the exterior elevations, this is the first item on the list of modifications.
Wonderful. Could the applicant approach the podium and state your name and address for the record, please?
Michael Parkinson, you on my address, hit that one, or would you like where I live? PL Box 336 Chapel Hill, Tennessee.
Wonderful, thank you, Mr. Parkinson. So we are going to go through your list of repairs one at a time, or modifications, and appreciate you taking the time to try to save this beautiful old house in our historic district. It does need a little bit of attention, as the pictures show. So we're going to start with the removal of the existing siding, trim, soffits, on all elevations, including the front porch areas, and to replace with white, smooth, hardy-plank cement board, or cedar mill hardy-plank cement board, with a four and a half inch reveal. So to that, the four and a half inch reveal, is that the current reveal on the existing siding?
It's, yes, sir, it's, it's four and a half, it varies from four and three quarters to four and a half, four and seven eighths. The front porch being, have, being as it, has not been in the weather for all those years, it's in really nice condition. I want to keep it, and it's just some weathered paint on it that crackled, looks pretty good, but I want to keep that original wood. The rest of it is not pretty, but to continue with.
I see your preference is smooth siding.
It is, because the front will be, on the front porch, because it's all relating to the front porch, I'm building, I want to build it off of what I have existing already, so when the front porch gets sanded back down and filled back in, it will be smooth. There's no way to keep the, get it down into the grain, even if I could get it into the original grain, it'll just be sanded down.
Okay, okay. Do any of the other Commissioners have questions?
Sorry about that, guys, we just got the pictures up.
That's all right.
If I need to go into the disrepair of the siding and all?
Well, we see the-
I mean, you're going to see some more pictures, so.
Yes, yes, I believe that speaks for itself, and the property was used as a triplex for many years, and has quite a lot of deferred maintenance, so that's fairly obvious.
Yes, thank you.
Well, it's there-
I'll make a motion to approve the siding as submitted.
Okay, we have one motion to approve, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have first and second, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for the remove, the replacement of the siding with-
That was easy enough.
That's, we've only 13 more.
Yeah, that was a big one, too.
Good. All right, next up is to replace the front door with a wooden door and side lights.
Yes.
Let's see, we have a picture of that here, did we have a picture of the existing door, Amelia?
Well, this is the door, just like what he is do, he is doing, there is no front door right now, the front door is gone, but this is one at 134 Cherry Lane, this is exactly what his will look like, I don't know that it'll be painted black, but this is what his-
Yeah, the door, the door and the side lights.
Not the, not the topper.
At the topper, at the, maybe the kick plate, I kind of like the kick plate, that probably, we'll probably do a brass kick plate.
Okay, it is wooden, did the original door opening have the side lights like this as well?
It did not.
Did not?
No.
It was just a, just a door, I take it.
You can kind of see, well, that's what you get right now.
Is the width of the opening such that it's requiring those side lights? Does a standard-sized door not fit in this opening? I'm trying to understand why, why the addition of the side lights.
I liked them.
Fair enough.
I mean, I liked them, there's no light in the hallway, there is no light in the hallway at all.
And there's no?
It's, it's a, I'd call it a dog trot, I mean, if I was, I could, if I had a dog, but there's, it just runs open in the hallway from one end to the other with no light in there.
Okay, okay.
And with the door not having any glass in it, I thought that, kind of like the glass on the side.
I can't tell from the pictures, is there a transom over the top? I guess not, you're saying there's not much-
There was no transom.
Okay.
No transom.
Just thinking about the era of the house, and what would be most appropriate there. Gotcha.
I'm still trying to figure out what that window is on the side, on the porch, so I haven't got an official name for that yet either.
That full-size window?
Full-size walkout window.
I believe they may have been used to walk right out, I've seen that a few in this 1890s, turn-of-the-century-style house. Okay, do any of the Commissioners have any other questions? Okay, if not, welcome a motion.
I move we approve.
Second.
Okay, got a first and second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One opposed, the motion, two opposed, that's three in favor, four in favor, two opposed, okay, motion carries, is approved as submitted. Okay, next up is our fencing in the backyard, we're going to add a fence of eastern cedar wood, locally sourced, the maximum height of 92 inches and a minimum height of 72 inches, based on the terrain of the property. So I see you're shooting for a level fenced top, there is a little breakdown, do we have any issue, Amelia, with the height, as far as codes are concerned here?
No, nothing over eight foot, so.
Okay, wonderful. I would commend you for using locally sourced wood, that's probably more accurately something that we would have found 100 years ago in our neighborhood than the pressure-treated stuff we see today, although it's obvious from the pictures, you got ahead of us a little bit on this, and so we're approving something that's already been built, or potentially approved.
That is correct, portion of it has been built, but he did get a permit from the Building and Codes Department, you know, in advance.
Okay.
I did not know any better, I mean, I asked for a fence permit, they said sure.
Fair enough.
They just did.
They just overlooked, somebody didn't know to look that it was historic.
Understood, understood.
And I keep, I plan on keeping it neighbor-friendly on both sides.
It looks, it looks great, so, and you did get your permit, so my apologies for stating otherwise. Okay, is there any other discussion about the fence?
No.
Okay.
I move we approve the fence.
Okay, thank you, Linda.
Second.
We got a first and a second, thank you, David, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries, keep building that beautiful fence.
Thank you.
All right, next item up, number four, to install gutters with steel or galvanized half-round gutters and round downspouts.
There are none on the house now.
Currently no gutters at all, not too surprised at Victorian era, this is a nice choice, it's something that we see often in the historic district, I see no issue with these gutters, and anybody else have any questions about the gutters? And you will be wrapping these all the way around, all sides?
Any sloped, sloped roof, all sides.
Okay.
All sides, all slopes.
All right, wonderful, all right, do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion, we approve the gutters.
David, first, do we have a second?
Second.
Jeff, second, all right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your gutters are approved, sir. Moving on to item number five, add cement or stucco to the foundation around the house base, except around the front porch. Okay.
I'd like to modify that a little bit, I plan, right now it's block, all the way around, you've got to hide the block, going to stucco it, I'd like to stucco it or seam in it, and then when you get to the front porch, I want to stucco it, but I still want to put something over the front foundation of the porch. Originally I wanted stone, the stacked stone, but I'm not liking that now. And when we get to the, when we get to the porch railings, I could probably explain it a little better, how I want to extend the railings to look like they go to the ground, but then they're still going to have plantings in front of the porch.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding.
Yeah, I didn't, probably didn't-
The picture that I have on there is what we're going to come to eventually, it was hard to put these in an order that-
So you'd be covering the block?
Yes.
With, is this wood, pickets?
Pickets, there we go, pickets, thank you very much.
To give the effect of something that might have been found during this era.
Yes, to give, to separate the porch from the house.
Okay.
The rest of the foundation.
I was going to say that the, it might not have been an original choice for this particular house, but then again-
Original choice had, yeah, had granite pier.
It would have been piers.
Yeah.
And it would have been opened with probably lattice around or something. What material are the pickets?
It's going to be hardwood, painted hardwood.
Okay.
And then what about, what about the sides and the back? Are you, are you still open to what you're going to do about that, or?
The sides?
Sides and the back.
Oh, I just want it stuccoed, just, just a, just a sheen of stucco to hide the, not stucco, cement, I got pictures, just a sheen of cement to hide the block.
Skim coat of?
Yes, skim coat, thank you very much.
I got you.
That's a bad picture, but it's one here in town, that's a thick one.
You going for a smooth finish?
Yes.
Textured, smooth?
Yes, smooth.
Okay, okay. Any plans to put expanded metal over it first, or anything to keep it from cracking at the same spots where the blocks are cracking, or are you just going to skim?
You talking about like when you put chicken wire up, oh yes, yes, oh yes.
Okay, good, good, that'll help it hold for years.
You know, there'll be some kind of transition, I'm not 100% sure what kind, but there'll be a transition from the siding over the stucco, something to draw the water that way, nothing, nothing dramatic, just a little something to go out that way.
Keep the water away from your sill.
It may just be a slope.
Okay, any other discussion on this item, questions? If not, will entertain a motion? Anyone want to approve this one?
I don't have a problem with it, so I'll make a motion, we approve it as submitted.
Okay, David, we have a first, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Linda, thank you, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, motion carries, add the cement to the foundation, and the wooden pickets to the front. All right, item number six, remove the existing concrete porch steps and replace with wooden stairs and handrails.
Just for clarification, he is wanting to do this style of railings on the porch as well, and bring that down on the handrails as well.
Okay.
On the stairs.
Yes.
So there were a couple of different pictures that, that he wanted to show, what style of the porch would be, those railings aren't indicative of what he's going to do on that particular picture, it's, it's the flat slats, is what he is envisioning.
Okay.
And that's also going to help with the front porch, to tie those in together.
So the balusters that were turned in that photo are not what you're after, you're-
No, those, those-
Those balusters are probably won by threes, and so you're looking at the fat side of it.
And the, and the pickets on the front of the porch?
Would be similar, down underneath, yes.
Would be similar, flat, okay, okay.
Is the floor, current floor of the porch wood?
Yes, sir, but it's, it's also fence, fence wood, when they, when they put it back down, they repaired it over time, they, somebody just went down to the hardware store and got some fencing wood, just that, that three-quarter, about six-foot, and laid that on the, on the deck, but the wood will be, it will go back to, the deck itself will be wood, definitely.
Since items number six and number seven both deal with the porch and the pickets, well, let me see here.
Picket says number eight, that-
Number eight, okay, then we're going to stick with one at a time, I don't want to get any confusion here, so we're going to remove the existing concrete steps and replace with wooden stairs and handrails that are intended to reflect the design around the porch. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
Okay, Jeff, first, need a second?
A second.
May or may, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number six is approved. Moving on, number seven, add the porch railings for code compliance, porch is high enough that-
Yes.
It's a safety feature that you need technically to have this railing.
I do.
The picture we see in front of us here with the, is this the style you're going after, with the double up?
That is the style I prefer.
Okay.
We prefer.
And the opening, I assume the size of the opening will meet the codes' requirements?
Yes, and that, anything above 30 inches from the floor has to have railings on it, and that's why he's going to put the railings back.
Okay.
You're saying the height, Amelia? The height from the ground to the top, bottom of the floor of the, of the porch, anything more than 30 inches has to have railings.
Okay, do we have any idea if this was an original feature at all?
I believe not, there's no indication that there was ever a rail on that.
How do you expect that this railing will interact with the columns on the porch? You going to go around the columns, or try to attach to the columns?
We got another one, we got another picture.
How about we, you want to talk about the columns, that's number nine?
The railings?
These all kind of go together.
Yes, the wood pickets around the foundation of the front porch have already been talked about, pardon me, I'm just going through the list, but I think we touched on the wooden pickets around the foundation.
That was number five, I'm sorry, number six.
Yes, we're on six, but number eight is the wooden pickets that we've already discussed, number seven is the porch railings where we're at, and number nine deals with cleaning, repairing, and replacing the bases of the columns, so number seven and number nine are going to tie together in this conversation. So back to that question of how, I'm just trying to understand, and want to make sure we're all clear-
We bring that picture up of the columns?
The front of the house, or?
The, the ones that I was submitting, we had the square box underneath.
Like that.
Okay, okay.
Okay, that's a bad picture, that looks, the bottom half of that column looks round from the rail down, it's a square box, there's another picture, hey, it's a little closer, that's probably better, but I need a box involved.
So you'll be boxing around the base of the column?
Yeah, the columns are going to come down, get cleaned, get scraped, get painted, there's several of them that are rotten right down the very bottom, I'm really happy they're all intact.
Yes.
But that little bit of rot, so whack it off 30 inches, then get the column as such to put back on top of a single box, slightly larger than the column, to support also the column, what is that round thing that goes around the bottom of the column?
Collar.
What?
The collar?
Collar, the collar.
I don't get that.
About as big as the, a little bit bigger than the collar, about 14 inches, whereas the column is maybe 10, the box would be 14.
Okay, so if I understand you correctly, you'll be cutting about 30 inches off the column?
Yes.
And stacking the existing column on a box that you'll fabricate?
Yes, and the rail will be tied into that box.
Okay, okay, I understand what you're saying now. Have any discussion on this item?
It's going to be pretty, I promise, it's a period thing.
Ricky, because I see, the reason I brought this up is I see the difficulty of trying to tie this fence into the columns, when there was, or the railing, because there was no railing, and now you're adding a feature, you know, reasonably so, but how it interacts with the columns is-
The railing's required, didn't it, Amelia? So it's-
I mean, by code, it is required, have railings.
Okay.
I think, you know, it's a pretty simple rail system, and the house itself, just the word vernacular makes it simple also, so I'm just trying to keep it, it can't be too ornate.
Well, I can see where you have this rot issue at the base.
Yes.
Is the little base on the underside of the column concrete, or, or is it wooden, or?
Underneath the column, a little bitty, little bitty, it's a-
Sets on a little square.
Chuck of wood, little square piece of wood.
Wood, okay, obviously that, structurally, it's going to be hard to repair that.
Yes.
Any kind of bondo, there's wood just gone here, so I can see where cutting that portion out, replacing it with something's going to help save what's left of your original columns, and since codes requires this railing, that puts us in a kind of a unique situation here, at least you've got some good-looking pictures of how you're going to go about it.
Yeah, you know, I spent a lot of time riding around town, this district particularly, a lot of them do it that way, there's a lot of them, just like that.
Okay, well, that certainly helps, when you can find examples of that style craftsmanship in the existing historic district, so appreciate your research on that. Okay, any other discussion on these items?
But we don't actually have a picture of the square, the 30-inch square base that-
Something similar here.
I'm not sure which one it is.
Well, that is closer to what he's talking about doing, that bottom is, looks round, but it's actually square.
Okay.
And then he puts his round one on top of that, on top of the rail.
Okay.
I am a little concerned, you going to use the existing collar up above this 30-inch square?
Yes.
Because I, I'd fear the column will taper, and that collar might not fit higher up.
The collar, collar doesn't taper.
Okay, okay, good.
The top and bottom is straight, the bottom is going to get, it got whacked off of 30 in the box, the column is 10 inches, the box would be 14, 15 to accommodate the collar, so that's what it would be, is a 15-inch square box, all the way to the, to the floor of the porch.
Okay, okay, we appreciate you trying to retain as many original materials as possible.
The box will appear bigger than the column, just because I want, trying to keep the collar, which is also going to be kind of painful.
Okay, so, let's bundle together items number seven and number nine, to add the porch railings for code compliance, and to strip, clean, and repair the existing round porch columns, and add new bottom square column bases, because these two items tie together. Do we have a motion to approve items number seven and nine?
I'm, I move we approve, seven and nine.
Do we have a second?
Second.
May or may, first and second, any other discussion on this? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, items number seven and nine are approved. Moving on to number 10, we'll remove and replace the floorboards with hardwood, this is the porch.
Yes, it also slopes severely.
Yeah, and as you have explained, the wood that's on there currently is inferior- Yeah, and as you have explained, the, the wood that's on there currently is inferior and
Yes.
Yeah, we got a good picture here, it's rotted back pretty severely. Tell us a little bit about the hardwood you're using. I see a picture of it here, it's a five-quarter by six, epay?
Epay. Brazilian hardwood, South American hardwood, resistant, rot-resistant, insect-resistant. No treatment to get it that direction. Not cheap.
Understood, yes.
What I want to use now, I don't know if it'll be tongue and groove. I, I'm always worrying about separation. I know it generally stays, but it still bugs me when I see separation. So I think a tight butt fit will probably, is what I'd like to do. Unless someone can really talk me into leaving some kind of gap.
You've got a good cover on that porch. You're going to get rain blown in under there, but this wood shouldn't expand like some softer woods, which is what's going to cause a lot of your separation.
I'm trying to think of the couple on, on East Main that did this a few years ago on their deck. I think it's the Egleys. The, the, the green, kind of Victorian. Um, I don't know if you've met them yet, but it's, I can't remember his first name.
Eric.
Eric. Eric Egley. They did the same thing, and if you, if you have any questions about expansion or contraction,
Oh, okay.
you might contact them.
Did they use this particular
I think they did.
type of wood? Okay, okay. I, I have noticed oak hardwood used the tongue and groove before, but it's really important that you get it wet and let it expand before you start finishing it. But I think that's, it's a little bit unstable for this sort of thing. So while this is not a local species, it is something that's probably more appropriate for this use. Okay, any other discussion, any questions about the replacing the flooring on the porch? If not, will entertain a motion to approve?
I move we approve.
Okay, Jeff's first, Linda's second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number ten is approved. All right, moving on to eleven. Replacing the decorative front porch lighting fixtures with copper, bivolo, hanging, or wall-mounted fixtures, and several recessed ceiling lights. Can you tell us about your lighting?
Um, right now, there's a hanging light. And I think we just, I'd kind of like the option to either hang one, which is pretty ratty, or wall-mount next to the door. That's why I have the two pictures up there, one or the other. Shows it hanging, but I think, I think a wall-mounted one would look good also, but some things I'd kind of like just to keep in my back pocket till the time comes and say, this is the one. But either way, they're very nice lights. Hand, hand, uh, handmade in New Orleans.
Right.
Pretty lights.
They look nice.
And a copper mailbox to boot, right next to it.
I must say, we are tasked with trying to keep things as original as possible, to retain the character of the house, so.
I don't know about this.
In, in my opinion, the hanging one is, is really what you should retain, but that's
Well, the original, let's go back to the original, so eighteen ninety, there was no electricity. So that was added somewhere since, and I don't know what period, when that would have been added.
Right, okay.
And that's, I mean, it's
Gotcha.
I just have a question about this, the style of the light, of the lights you've chosen. I, I don't think that goes with the Clappard House.
Okay.
I can't, I can't think of what to suggest. Bill, do you have any ideas?
I don't write off, um
Should it be more, you think it should be simpler than what it is?
No. Well, yeah, I do think it should be simple.
I like that it's handmade.
That's pretty simple.
It, it a little bit, at least it's not cast metal or something that wouldn't have been appropriate.
David, you have any, any thoughts?
No, I don't.
Looking over our guidelines for renovations doesn't address lighting at all. I'm just scrolling through, so we we didn't include that.
Okay.
And we don't have anything to stand on.
Yeah, I'm thinking a lot of the renovations that have been done along Main Street especially, and you know, it's, there's no, no pattern sort of individual style that the homeowner's put up.
Well, if we use existing, uh, materials that can be found in the historic district, I, I must admit, there are similar gas lamps at five-twenty-one East Main of this style that were manufactured in New Orleans. So I don't think you're too far off here.
Yeah.
Any other questions or discussion?
So David, are you, are you saying we don't have, I mean, Gib, are you saying we don't have a say-so in, in this?
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just, if you look, generally speaking, uh, the general principle is that the oh, let's see. Contemporary design for alterations to existing properties shall not be discouraged when such alterations do not destroy significant historical, architectural, or cultural materials. So lights can be removed, you know, so that it's not a forever change.
I see.
I would just like to add, I, I think your hanging light that's existing should be what you replace. I, I, I am a little concerned with adding a, a side light.
We wouldn't add one, it'd be one or the other. That's
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's my, my position.
So it's one or the other. But we, we do need a motion, since we have a line item here, to approve. I, I guess we should specify for the applicant which one we prefer. Think that's appropriate, Gib?
I could go either way.
Okay.
I didn't hear what you said, Gib.
I'm, I'm okay with either.
Oh, okay.
So we want to give them the option, Bill?
I'm inclined to give them some leeway here, it's a, it's a pretty significant project.
Let me ask you one more question. You, you mentioned also recessed lighting.
Yes.
I assume you're probably going to have a, a pretty substantial rewire of the house anyway, so you're talking can lights?
Yes, the, the small LED, I mean, it's not, not the big things that hang up overhead fifteen years ago, the smaller LEDs get some light.
So this light that you're, the, the, the light we're talking about really is not solely lighting your porch.
Check, yes.
You'll have other means of lighting the porch. But this is going to be your decorative piece.
Yes. Need the option.
I'm in no position to make a motion, so I need
Well, I'll make a motion that we suggest that they can use the fixture, but make it a hanging pendant.
Okay, we have a motion to approve a pendant as presented.
That means hang down?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
I said left you in the car.
I'll second the pendant.
Okay. First and second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, you are approved for a hanging pendant light, much like what is there now, as well as your recessed light.
We don't want what's there now, that'd be
Well, it's hanging.
Yes.
Yes, yes, sir. All right. That was number eleven. Moving on to item number twelve. Want to remove the existing front concrete walkway and replace with brick from the sidewalk to the base of the new wooden steps.
The sidewalk here currently is going to be removed and replaced because it's unlevel. The city is going to be taking care of that. He is going to leave his, um, carriage step out by the road.
Yes.
If you could see in this picture, you could see the stairage kept, stepped there, and then behind that is where the sidewalk is. So from his new wooden steps to the sidewalk will be brick.
Confiscate it from the sidewalk in front of the house now.
Gotcha.
When they tear it up.
Save those original brick.
Oh, yes.
Looks like a pretty short span from the
Yeah.
stairs to the sidewalk. Were you looking, six or seven feet there?
Probably, yes.
Okay, okay.
Maybe ten.
I think that one's pretty simple. Appreciate you saving those bricks and putting them to use. Do we have a motion for approval?
Make a motion, we approve, as submitted.
Second.
Jeff's second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item is approved. Thank you for saving the brick. All right, item number thirteen. All existing windows, wooden casings are to remain, replacing the storm windows with invisible windows. So if I'm reading this correctly, you're keeping all of your original windows in the house?
Yes. They're operational now.
Wonderful, that's, that's rare. Even the one on the front porch?
Oh, yeah, that's
Wow. That's great. And you're going to cover these with the invisible, uh, storms? I assume that's a solid sheet of
A solid sheet that, that embeds, and it doesn't poke out.
Yes. Did a similar thing on my office, polycarbonate over them. You can't see the thing from the street at all, just see the original windows. That's a great choice.
I know it is.
Any other questions on this one?
No, I think that sounds great. Not to have those, the old storms up there.
Windows are one of those important items that really make a difference in a house. So trying to replace those would not only be costly, but it would really change the feel of the, of the house. So again, appreciate you trying to salvage what you can. Uh, so do we have a motion for approval? Was that a motion, Linda?
Yes, that's a motion.
Okay, we have a first.
Second.
Second, Gib. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number thirteen is approved. All right, here we are at fourteen already, you're doing good.
Bad in a thousand.
The light or power pole is to be relocated and underground electric installed by Milton C. Electric.
They're going to remove the, uh, I've got it worked out already, I think I have it down now. The, uh, power pole is going to, as it is now, is going to be in the middle of my driveway. They're going to move it to the property line after construction, because I've got a tent pole up now. Move to the property line, I'm going to go underground to the, to the box somewhere on the side of the house.
Okay. This existing pole is in the right-of-way, I assume.
It is.
Now, they're going to keep a pole in, in the right-of-way, but you're going to bury your
Yes.
service.
Yes.
Okay. Where is the existing box where it enters the house? On the side, by the driveway?
Driveway side.
Okay.
It'll be moved back toward the backyard, ten or fifteen feet. Just not where it is now.
That all sounds like an improvement. But as far as alterations to the house, really, you're just moving your box.
That's all.
Okay. The rest of it's power company and right-of-way stuff. All right. Any other questions, discussion on this item? If not, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
First, David.
Second.
Second, Gib. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number fourteen is approved, as submitted. Wonderful. Well, we appreciate you coming before us today and, and talking about your upgrades to the house. And I, I have to say, just personally, as a neighbor, I, I appreciate what you're doing over there. That, that was one of the last holdouts on College Street of homes that really needed some attention, so.
It was hard to find a, a single-story home.
Yes.
Let me tell you.
Well, they're not building many of those anymore, so thanks for investing in our historic downtown.
When do you hope to, to start?
The inside, a lot of the inside has been done. Originally, I didn't plan on removing the siding, but as I got further and further and further and further into it, it's so bad it needed removal. And so in order to get on with the electric and the plumbing and all, and insulation, I got to have the siding up. So, I mean, I just have to have the siding up first. So we actually started on the inside, well along. Maybe framed in, not quite well along, but framed in on the inside, and now we can really get moving. Hopefully, we'll be in by July or so. Hopefully.
Good luck.
Yeah, that's what I need, that's what we need.
All right, thank you so much, Mr.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Amelia, uh, next up, our staff reports and other business.
Yes, sir. Um, other business, we need to approve the twenty-twenty-three Historic Zoning Commission calendar. Uh, that should be on your screen, everything's the same, I believe July fourth. We are going to get the applications the Friday prior to the week of Fourth of July, rather than it following the day after Fourth of July, or the day before. So I figure a lot of people will be out of town, but the rest of it is all the same. The first Tuesday of the month is the deadline date, and the third Tuesday of the month is the meeting.
Wonderful.
And you need to
I move we approve the calendar.
Linda, is our approve first? Do we have a second?
Second.
David, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Our calendar has been approved, Amelia.
And then wanted to give you all the information we were able to get with the property, Rutherford County Property Assessor's Office, and they have made a little program to be able to run a report at the end of every month to let us know which houses have sold and also get the address, if it's other than the address that we have in the district, so that we can mail them information. So we will start a program where we will follow up with those new ones and send them information on the historic zoning requirements for the area.
Good.
Will that information just go to new owners, or what about, what about existing owners?
Well, right now, we, we started after the last time, the last meeting we had, it was discussed how we could reach out to those who were buying, because the applicant we had at that time bought a house that was in historic district, that he didn't realize it. So that was the main first objective, was for them to be able to get, to be, to be able to do us the report, which last year there were eleven homes that sold. But we'll get that every month now. But we do need to do a mail-out to everybody in that zone, which we have that listing of all the mailing addresses for that already.
Because it's been, it's probably been a while since we've done something like
We ha, it has been a while since we've been able to do that.
I think that would help with some of the questions that people have, you know.
And then I guess you all probably saw the new video that was done in the fall after our June meeting. Actually, I think it was like a week after our June meeting. They had a, Channel Three ran a piece on the Historic Zoning Committee. If any of you have not seen it, I would go back and look in the archives. Mr. Steve Burris of our Communications Department did a fantastic job. Our chair, Mr. J, or Chairman Jakes, he also participated in that video, and they gave a lot of information out about the historic zone, which was really, really nice.
Is that airing occasionally on
It will, I, I'm not sure how he is incorporating that into, um, Channel Three time slots, but I do know it would be on there for you to be able to go back and archive and look at it. I can find out that date for you, Gib, and send you that information.
I can just probably Google it, eh?
Yeah, it's definitely on the, the city's YouTube page.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
And that's all that I have for today.
All right. Thank you so much, Amelia. That's all of our business today, so if there is no objection,
Motion to adjourn.
Well, then I'll take a motion in a second instead. And, uh, all in favor, let's adjourn.
Aye.
Aye.